May 8, 2019. I'm sorry my voice is about ready to go, but I hope you can hear me. Roll call please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Vieira?
Here.
Dr. Vogt, here. Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes will be a little late this evening and I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the post as required by law.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I start about the business of the beach at South, the council will invoke Ms. Brown.
So it's my pleasure to ask Judith Brown to come up Executive Director of motions because the city and motions and our disabilities council has been working together on making one of our beaches, the beach at North Bath, a what we're calling the, and Stan, Stan is there. Stan, why don't you come up to join us? You're a key part of all of this. So we have been working to make that beach in particular one of the most accessible beaches, really on the Jersey Shore, certainly in Long Branch. And so I'm going to turn it over to Judith and to Stan to do kind of an overview of what the plan is.
So first of all, thank you for having me here tonight. I have to thank the city as a whole for its vision and cooperation in this project. I'll be honest, our initial participation here was to have a beach party and our initial impulse was to see if we could get people in wheelchairs both onto and off the beach successfully. We know that access to recreational facilities on land is one thing that people have approached, but ADA compliance doesn't necessarily mean that a beach facility is fully accessible. For folks in wheelchairs, the beach has been off limits for most of their lives. So we approached Stan and the Department of Recreation and asked to get access to the beach at the end of the season. They took every Mobi mat they had and created a space where we invited 125 people, 26 of them wheelchair users, for a summer concert. And the city council came down and mayor came down, also Assemblyman Hoteling came and saw just exactly what that did for the people who attended, some of whom, like I said, haven't been out on the beach since their disability occurred decades earlier or in their lives because they've been wheelchair users since childhood. So with that at hand, I think Stan took a lot of the initiative along with councilwoman Vogt and we went ahead and planned a fully accessible area of the beach. And what that means is that, well, I'm going to hand this off to you to do the specs.
Okay, so what we're doing is we took the North Bath out on the beach and we approached Mimi Feliciano from South Beach and asked her if she would be interested with her project of donating the access mats for the beach. Actually, they're not mats, they're hard plastic, which she did. She wrote us a check immediately, we did. So by Memorial Day, actually we're going to have to next week to build the project. They're going to be able to come down the access ramp at North Bath Avenue, go out onto the beach approximately about 100, 225 feet. We're starting it a little bit small on this angle to see how it goes and make sure everything's okay to get the wheelchairs on and off. I don't foresee a problem with it at all because they're much stronger than the Mobi mats that we use, the access mats that we had down there, which were regular mats. There was not a problem with that during the dance, dance party, as I call it.
There was a lot of dancing.
And that will be ready to go by Memorial Day and we're going to get some handicaps as soon as we get the budget approved, we're going to get some handicap benches to go down there, picnic tables, where the person in the motorized wheelchair or regular wheelchair can sit right with their families or guests, friends or whatever on the mat themselves. It'll overhang onto that and then the people will be able to go down the stand. So we're just trying to get them as close to the water as we can. We can't get them all the way down because they won't be able to clean the beaches and won't be able to get back with the amenities and the lifeguards and all that. But we're getting them a very fair sized area to start. I'm hoping to build on that in the future as we go along, as we see that. We've got some shade areas out there and along with that, this Saturday, we're having a fishing, a little fishing tournament for them. I have six, sorry, six.
Six, six folks in chairs.
Six of the motorized wheelchairs coming down to Plaza Court. We're going to start at 10 o'clock. We're going down there tomorrow to put the mats in place and to get it all ready. And we're going to have a fishing tournament for them from 10 o'clock till 2 o'clock on Saturday. A couple of guys having fish since they're kids, they talk to, a couple trying to get them out and they're just ecstatic and then we are truly trying to get the project done. So hopefully everything will go right Saturday and with the help of Judith and I've got to mention Wally and Stan Soden, they've been working with me hand in hand. They're actually going to meet me down tomorrow and they might test people, as I call them. They put them out in the sand and make sure everything works and everything and we're ready to go.
Yeah, Stan and Wally do ADA site visits for us, so they're uniquely qualified to see that the place is truly accessible, but the effort here is remarkable. There's no place else that I know of on the shore that has this kind of dedicated access for an entire season. We've kept this relatively small. We haven't done a lot of promotion on this because we want to be sure that everything works out as well as we want to do a shake down during the season. So June 8th, we are going to be cutting the ribbon on the accessible beach. I also put out a grant to the Reeves Foundation and I didn't have a chance to reach out to you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We had a meeting today with representatives from the Reeves Foundation who are working with Asbury Park to improve their accessibility and they're very interested not only in this project, but also in reaching out to Long Branch to see if their help could be extended in this direction. It may take some time because the initial work in Asbury Park is going to take a while, but they're definitely interested in coming and having a chat with the city of Long Branch. They're very impressed with what you guys have put together, so thank you.
And Judith, in addition, or Stan, in addition to the accessibility on the beach and to the beach, Stan or Judith, you're going to say that we have the handicap parking, the restaurants are right there and in addition to that, it's, somebody can spend the entire day there, if somebody wanted to go into the water, there's, what's the procedure for that?
Correct, correct. If we have floating wheelchairs, that we actually, we go out with two lifeguards assigned to the wheelchair, all they have to do is ask the ticket taker or the lifeguard on the beach that they'd like to go in the water and we have the wheelchairs that come up. They have the big cool tires and they actually strap up the person in, they have some flares on the sideways and they actually go in the water, there's a lifeguard in the front, there's a lifeguard in the back, they take them in and they usually spend 15 minutes to half hour because it gets a little tired after a while, you know, up there and they go in the waves and they actually, a couple of people just come down, they actually ride the waves in the wheelchair.
Yeah, this is what made you guys such great partners because you already do this. So, you know, this is extending what you already do to make the beach accessible. There are the wave chairs and then you have a couple of the big wheel sandy chairs.
Yeah, we have six of the big wheelchairs.
So for those folks who can transfer, we've already had this accommodation. For those folks who can't transfer, who are 100% wheelchair users, they now have access that they never had before.
I'm impressed. I was quite impressed here. I've heard a lot, so.
I know the two of you were down there too. That was, it was a good day.
Good day, a lot of dancing, I guess.
And with the wheelchairs too.
Yes.
And if I could just add a few things, in putting this all together, we were very conscious of the budget and, you know, seeing what other funding sources we could tap. So, you know, that's when Judith found this Christopher Reeves grant opportunity and so that's a $25,000 grant that we're hoping to hear from that shortly. And that's going to fund two staff members, I think it's two staff members, and the staff members would be part of Stan's crew, you know, so they work into the whole beach, you know, operation, but are, you know, skilled specifically to work with transfer and, you know, to make sure that all of the clients that come down are taken care of. So, and as Judith was saying, you know, you never know where a journey is going to take you, so the fact that she had the conversation today with the Christopher Reeves representatives and they said, oh, you know, we like what you're doing and we'd like to do more. So we'll see where that conversation takes us. That's kind of those unexpected kind of cool things that happen. And I just want to recognize, we all know that Stan is probably the most humble of gentlemen and, you know, when he talks about the fishing competition, this was all his idea. You know, he says, I can do that, you know, I can do that. So it's all his doing to make that happen and.
Hopefully it works.
Hopefully it works and hopefully the weather cooperates with us for a really terrific day, so we thank you for that.
Yeah, I want to follow along with that because a lot of this really would not have happened without you.
Right.
Thank you. It's a joint effort, believe me, it's not just me. I mean, I talked to the mayor, I talked to council, everybody's on board with this.
Yeah, great.
The same team, we wouldn't be doing this, so it's not just me, believe me.
And if I may, again, throw in with Mimi Feliciano, it was one phone call to her and Stan made it and it was a yes. She helps the South Beach project, which is where the beach is, and that was, you know, a very generous.
A very grateful.
To create that entire hard surface down there, so.
Yes.
And I like the fact that we're starting out on a small site, so we can see how it works rather than jumping in with a ton of money or something out of the budget and all that. We're starting slow, we're seeing how it goes, we're giving them enough to do it and then we're listening to the people that are out there, that we all are, I mean, you know, what they need and maybe in the future we go a little bit further.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you all, appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabe and Joe. Blackside is the Neighborhood Fun Day. Mayor?
So I just wanted to update, this is something that, you know, we're all involved in, in the recreation department, it's the administration, so we're going to bring back Neighborhood Fun in Long Branch. And so what we have scheduled for the summer is four Neighborhood Fun Days throughout the city, which I'll give you the tentative locations, where basically we're bringing a day of activities or a couple hours of activities to some neighborhood areas. And what I mean by that is we're going to go into a neighborhood for the kids, rock climbing walls, water slide games, ice cream. Every park will have a different little event. And again, so it should be, one of the four should be accessible to parents and children in almost every neighborhood. So the neighborhoods we're thinking about right now and tentative locations are Jerry Morgan Park, the West End Art Center, Lannick Avenue Park and Van Court. And like I said, the activities that we're, will be, will be water slide, rock climbing wall, backyard games, ice cream, DJ. This is all going to be free for the families. Everyone's in walking distance in their backyard, their neighborhood. We wanted to create a nostalgic event for the youth here in Long Branch that has a true summer in Long Branch feel to it. And like I said, we want to bring it to a different part of town for each one. Bill, you probably remember maybe even Marion, when we were kids here in these seven programs where recreation park, what was it, like a recreation truck would come with all sorts of games and things. So it's sort of reminiscent of.
Good time.
And the other thing I wanted to mention, which is really important, I want to thank those sponsors as well, is this is going to be all free to the city and at no cost to the city or the taxpayers. And we had several sponsors who signed on to do each evening and so I want to thank RWJ Barnabas Health at Monmouth Medical Center for being one of the sponsors, New Jersey Natural Gas, Leon Abakian Engineers, Grace Mamero Attorneys and the law firm of Reynone, Coglin and Mancello, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
What time of the day, John?
Well, we're, most of, the plan right now, I have these dates tentatively, again, it's tentative Jerry Morgan on June 21st, the West End Art Center on July 12th, Lannick Avenue on July 26th, and Van Court Park on August 11th. My understanding is that they are Friday evenings, to be determined, like between 5:00 and 7:00 or 5:00 and 7:30 and 7:30, with the exception of Van Court, which will do on Sunday afternoon. And we may do that maybe later in the afternoon, somewhere like 3:00 or 6:00 and so forth. You know, we're asking neighborhood leaders what would work best for the community and for the kids and their parents, so.
That's great, a good plan.
So it should be good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Reynone?
I was just asking, Mr. Jackson, was Mr. McManaman's memo and the attachments circulated to council?
I didn't see that memo.
So this project involves a 169 unit market rate apartment complex that was approved and it's on Ocean Boulevard, Cabrera Avenue, Widmer Place and Long Branch Avenue in the city. And the developer has a redevelopment agreement and they already have planning board approval, but I guess the developer had a contract purchaser who actually was going to build the project and they've now kind of parted ways, so there's a new developer that's stepping in. We're not changing anything, any of the approvals that were already granted, but we need to designate that developer so that we can then enter into a development agreement with this new developer. So we hope to have, we have prepared a resolution approving a termination agreement and essentially what we're saying is that, you know, we're releasing you of your obligations under redevelopment agreement and we're going to transfer them to the new developer.
Just a name change?
Well, it's, no, they're actually new parties. They're actually new parties, so the new parties that will come in will have to submit an application to be designated as developers so that you'll see that application and who it's going to be. And my understanding is that the only change is going to be that they're going to take it from, George Kurt, if I'm wrong, I keep getting it backwards, from rental to for sale.
Yes.
Yes. So that's actually, that's actually the only change.
I think in any eventual developer's agreement, we give them either option to.
Correct.
Either scenario.
Correct, because that's a practical matter under the Fair Housing Act, you really can't dictate the method of ownership, so we didn't see that as a substantial change. They're not asking for any of the other changes and there is no tax abatement, that's part of this, as my understanding.
No.
So you're not, you're not being asked to terminate and then grant a tax abatement or something like that.
That's the project across the street, they have a subdivision right between Ocean Avenue and Long Branch Avenue?
Correct. Correct, it's a 169 unit.
So, look, when you say that they need to file an application again.
Because the new owners need to be designated as a developer.
Okay, so does that constitute, how does that relate to just that affordable housing ordinance again that we talked about? Does that put them in that category?
No.
No?
Because they already have planning board approval.
Okay, okay.
So because they have planning board approval, it would not relate to that.
Okay.
Do you have a tax abatement?
No, no tax abatement on this project, nor was there one requested. I assume that there's probably language in the redevelopment agreement that reserves their right to make an application, but there's no promise of or representation as it would be a tax abatement.
They're not altering the building or site design.
Correct.
It's strictly a transfer of the redeeveler.
Okay.
So once the resolution on for next meeting, I'll also circulate the McManaman, Scotland memo and copy of the writing for you. I'll shoot them up to Kathy Moore, so if you have a follow up.
Okay, good.
Any more questions?
Yep.
Okay, Anthony, I want to have a presentation on the Belmont Development.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Evan Zimmerman. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Jordan O'Halloran and Sisla and I'm pleased to be here tonight to present to you a great new concept for redevelopment project in the city. Tara, if you would, this project is proposed by Sunny Pens Grove LLC. They're the contract purchaser and proposed re developer of property located on Third Avenue. It's 27 to 37, Third Avenue in the city and it's block 280 lots 11.02, 12, 13 and 14. It's in the city's lower Broadway corridor redevelopment zone and we're proposing a mixed use building that meets the intent of that zone and the guidelines. So if you turn behind you to see a rendering of the proposed building, the applicant proposes to revitalize this property by demolishing the existing structures that exist there and constructing a new mixed use building called the Belmont. The Belmont is comprised of first floor retail space with 30 residential units on the upper three floors. The building includes 2,008, 2,085 square feet of retail space, which you can see on the corner of Belmont and Third Avenue. Parking is provided in a surface lot that's actually located partially underneath the building and partially to the rear of the building and it's accessed via two different curb cuts, as Tara's pointing out there. One curb cut on Third Avenue and another one over on Belmont Avenue. So some of the amenities that this building's going to have include shared access to rooftop amenities, there's going to be a fitness room, communal game room, gathering room, a deck, fire pit and a grilling area on the roof. And surrounding that rooftop deck, there's going to be a green rain garden, which advances the city's green development objectives. So with that, we've been working with Mr. Graviano to gather his comments on this plan. We're ready and prepared to submit a complete application to the planning board, so we're here tonight to present this plan for your approval, for designation as re developer and to refer the application to the planning board. So with that, Tara Juliana Fiori of Monitford Architectural Studios is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the building.
Just before Tara starts, just so everybody's clear, the applicant is before the council because they are the contract purchaser and seek to be designated the re developer. All these plans at this juncture are purely conceptual and the applicant would eventually have to go through the full planning board process and the approval of the engineering and architecture of this building. So really this presentation tonight serves as the springboard to designate the re developer and go through the full development process that would follow thereafter.
And the initial designation is preliminary because.
Yes.
Correct. Here's the word.
So with that, Tara, if you could run through the design of the building, maybe talk about your architectural elements on the outside and run through the floor plan so that everybody has an understanding of how this building's going to look and what the redevelopment's going to look like.
Okay, the property is located on Third and Belmont. This just shows the area now that the property is, the building will be developed on. Currently, there is the old Bell Building, which is vacant, which is a small Mexican restaurant, and then there's another building next to it that is also vacant, I believe is vacant. The building itself was designed to have an art nouveau feel and it is made up of a retail space on the corner on the two streets and there is 30 apartment units and it's broken out down into one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom units with parking underneath. The ground floor has the retail space on the corner and then you have two, well, actually there's three access points into the garage area with parking underneath. There's a shared parking area with stairs and an elevator that goes up into the apartment areas on the following floors.
Tara, how big is the retail space?
About 2,000 square feet. And it's meant to be more like a small neighborhood type of retail, so it would just be something that people could access from the street level that either live in the area or, you know, coffee shop, small grocery, et cetera.
For about how many units there, for the retail?
There, just one.
Oh, just, okay.
For now, I mean, I guess they could, but it's planned for one.
Okay.
And then the lobby area with the vestibule here that they can go in, where you have mailboxes and the elevator that goes up to the floors above. In the basement, there is a small area for storage, so each unit will have its own storage This is the typical floor plan for the units of, for the second to fourth floor plans and each unit has like a door type of Juliet balcony that can look out. The core unit in the rear does have a small balcony. Each unit is made up of one, two or three bedrooms. There's only three one bedroom units and three, three bedroom units. But they're kind of set up that they could have two people renting an apartment, so if they're commuting from New York or in the area, they could share a unit, so it's more kind of marketed towards a younger, yes. And the units are replicated from the second to the fourth floor.
Tara, I'm sorry, what was the breakdown of type, one bedroom, two bedroom?
There are one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom.
And what's, what was the breakdown?
So there's three, I think there's three one bedroom and three three bedroom. Yes, that's correct, and 24 two bedrooms. The three bedroom, they're thinking that it would be maybe somebody relocating from the area that may want to just get a newer apartment is what they're thinking that they would provide for, you know, somebody was living here and had children and wanted a bigger apartment, they would stay there. But the other units are really planned just for, you know, a younger person who was coming down from New York or commuting from the train or in the area. The rooftop area is planned for amenities and there's a rooftop deck, a small fitness room, the elevator accesses this area as well, a gathering room of overhead garage doors that open up and there would be a rooftop deck with a rain garden that would, that kind of meets the town's objective for having outdoor space and garden area. So this would provide out there area for people to kind of gather and have an amenity without, you know, taking ground from the area. This is the elevations, this is the front elevation which faces Third Avenue. Here's the other elevation that faces Belmont and it just shows the use of the materials and, the rendering is probably better, use of the materials that they're proposing for the building, which would be a dark brick, and I actually have actual materials here. We have a dark brick for the brick area, the wood plank, which would be the trim up at the top. And by the front entry, he is proposing a kind of copper metal panel, which would kind of designate entry and give a hierarchy for entry and the rest of the panels would be alternating this kind of white beige and the darker metal for the windows and the rail.
Is that metal paneling?
Yes, these are metal.
The structure of the building itself, is that steel filled or made of?
We don't know yet. It most likely will be, and again, this is going to depend on the planning and everything else with the building, because this is very preliminary, but usually what we do is we do like a steel frame for the first floor for the concrete, you know, like a metal deck and then above would be steel framed. That's what we've been doing in the area for the other projects that are, it seems to be the most cost effective.
What's the square footage of the 24 units?
Well.
Tip.
Okay, so the square footage is broken down. So the square footage for the two bedroom units are anywhere between 965 and 1,000 square feet and the three bedroom units are about 1,350 square feet and the one bedroom units are about 900 square feet.
Do these units have a washer dryer in them?
Um, Joe, I'm not sure. I think we were planning on doing it, maybe a stackable. Okay, hold a second. Yes, we do have a stackable washer dryer in these units. Any other questions?
Are any of the units, are they going to manage for a power board wake up?
Um, not at this time that I'm aware of, but this is preliminary.
This building would be subject to the affordable housing thing.
Yeah. I mean, they have to.
I mean, they have to, fine.
Yeah. Is this, is this in the opportunities zone? This is in the neighborhood. Is it in the opportunities zone?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
You're talking about the federal opportunities, yeah, as opposed to the local?
Right, so that would play a role in this.
Not on our end.
Right, on your, your end, I would imagine, but. So, we, we're kind of developing the standard list of questions. And again, I know this is very early in the process, but, you know, the things that we want to look for consistently now is, you know, what's the commitment to hire locally in terms of construction and also in terms of jobs, you know, once you're up and operating. So, I don't know, you know, just to address that somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
When you go to the, the plan.
Okay, understood. Yeah, we haven't proposed any particular contractors off of anything yet, but that's something that we would absolutely...
So, Lou, what is the process then?
So, the process now is, assuming council doesn't have an objections, that we place on an agenda at the next meeting or subsequent meeting, a resolution, giving a conditional designation that would then essentially allow them to begin the negotiations of the redevelopment agreement and to greenlight then their application for the planning board. They would need to do the redevelopment agreement first. The redevelopment agreement essentially will say, you know, you'll develop it, it's this number of units, it's years of timeframe, then you'll file your application, and a set of timeframe, you get it all set.
So, any of the things that Mario talked about?
Would all go into redevelopment or they got to the planning board, correct?
Yeah. And so, just, I guess there are three things, the commitment to hire for construction, the commitment to hire in terms of, you know, long-term jobs, and then, you know, just amenities to the city. If there's, it's, you know, any, any way that the city other than this building that the developers can contribute to the city, to give it some, some thought of what the city, how the city could, how our city residents can benefit.
True.
Okay.
I really saw with Bill's idea, give it some fun, maybe we can get a couple of units for affordable housing.
Well, they're gonna have to because of the...
No, they're gonna have to pay the fee.
Right, yeah, the fee, or the...
Not the same as...
That's not the same as actually building your board meetings, correct?
Right, right. And then, just one more comment, and Nick, this was one of the comments that you made, just in terms of trying to go for somewhat of a consistent look as we kind of look down the road in terms of how we want Long Branch to, to look.
Yeah, definitely. That's why I made that comment earlier in the presentation, that this is just the initial go-around. When it gets to the planning board stage, you know, I'm the planning board planner, I'll definitely focus on the incorporation of landscaping and other aesthetically pleasing techniques into the design of the building and the site itself.
Yeah, okay, good.
Are you ready to go with this pretty much, or in the sense of...
We have all of our application materials that would be needed for the planning board's checklist, ready to go. So, as soon as we have the details of the redevelopment agreement ironed out, I think we could have an application submitted within a day.
And all the land has been purchased and everything?
We have a contract to purchase land right now, so we have them closed, and we're under contract to purchase.
So, so what's, what would be the, ideally what would be this timeline?
To post, post-approval to construction.
Well, you know, if you had to say this building is gonna be open on by such and such a time, what would be your best, yes?
I'd defer to...
I know, there are a lot of variables in there.
The answer is, it's gonna take from today to when you get a redevelopment agreement, it's gonna be 92 hours in 20 days, and they're gonna go through their approval process. So, I'm assuming that you're talking about something that, you know, in likelihood, you could have some approval by the end of the year. And I assume you're talking about a first quarter of next year is the earliest that you'd have construction, assuming financing is in place, whatever, or the permits you need are done.
And we are committed to accelerating that timeline any way that we can do it.
I know it's too early, though. You're gonna be looking for some major variances for that, or now we're just, you're gonna build in a...
So, so, and that's a good question. Is this plan conforming to the redevelopment plan, doesn't require an amendment to the redevelopment plan?
Does not require an amendment to the redevelopment.
Then there will be no variance.
There are a few minor deviations from the plan that were set forth in our engineers' zoning and planning analysis, but all those are minor type deviations, nothing that would require an amendment to the plan.
Or variance, because in the redevelopment, they didn't take that variance, so it just really has to go to the planning board.
Just a difference, you go to, straight to the, in front of us, or you gotta go to the development first?
Yeah, can't go to the zoning board. Well, can't go to the zoning board. If they're in a redevelopment zone, they have to develop it and of course, the redevelopment plan.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
We look forward to the redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Let's move on now to the review of the regular agenda. Any questions?
I just have one question real quick. On the replacing the bridge, why, why are we seeing that project? We, it's, like, we don't see all the projects, but we saw that project, but we don't have any details about it. So, it's just really a process question of understanding why we're seeing...
Certain projects?
Yeah. Eighty-three, which... You know, just as I saw it, it kind of, I don't remember seeing anything.
No, I just think that this is, I, I'm assuming that we're, that it's in a funding cycle and we're, we're just doing a resolution. We don't do a resolution on every project, but...
I know, that's why I was...
I received an email that went along with that from DOT saying that there needed to be a resolution.
Yeah, they needed a resolution. They actually had a public hearing about two months ago, and they're gonna have another one. So, there's a, it's a whole process that they're saving.
Right, DOT does, and they're asking us to...
Be on board, like, be on board.
Okay, okay. I just, like I said, it was...
Not every DOT project goes that way, but the interest on these major projects, they usually request some kind of resolution support.
They want buy-in from the municipal department.
Correct.
Okay.
They were here with it entirely.
Yeah, that's how they do it. They set up and then advertise and then come in and do the planning and all that.
Okay.
No more questions? Right now, I need a motion to close.
Can you move a second?
All favor.
All right.
And one close. I need a motion to adopt the resolution and go into an executive session for the following items. Our planning plan privilege, Robert rules, Mr. Renaud, commission statement by our council president, Willis, and contract negotiator, Mr. Chandler and Matt, for our collateral.
So, which?
Vocal?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
I need a motion to close the executive session.
So, move.